Board work session, it is Wednesday, July 20th, 2022 at 10:02 a.m. This is set to go until 11 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting room, building one, room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia, I'm the Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Ty Munster, and the boardroom. Commissioner Gary Edwards is excused for today. The topic on today's agenda is the joint work session with Nisqually Tribal Council. And Chair Willie Frank, I will hand it to you so you can do introductions on your end.
You'd think after two years I'd have the whole Zen thing figured out. But good morning, everybody. My name is Willie Frank III, Chairman of the Nisqually Tribe. I have our Treasurer on, and I'll let him introduce himself, let him introduce himself as well.
Hello, everybody. David Iell, Treasurer for Nisqually Tribe.
And I see we have two of our staffers over in the building department. I'll let them introduce themselves. Well, Justine Capra and Deb Preston are in our building department over there. And we also have Bob Iell on also. Have Bob introduce himself.
Good morning, Bob Iell here, Executive Officer of Medicine Creek Enterprise Corporation. Thanks for having me with you this morning.
All right, I think that's everybody on our end.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Although Commissioner Edwards is excused in a well-deserved break, he really sends his regards to all of you. And he is a little bit concerned that he missed this great opportunity to connect with you all. So his regards are your way.
Well, that's good. No, we miss Commissioner Edwards. We always look forward to having these conversations. I mean, this is, I think this is maybe the third time, fourth time, maybe? We've been able to come together here. And unfortunately, we can't quite do it in person yet. But, you know, hopefully, as we, you know, continue to build this relationship and work together, that we do get in person and have these discussions together in person, so.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was saying yesterday. Would love to have something in person, hopefully for our next one, which would be, you know, a couple of months from now, depending on everyone's schedule, just to sit down and sometimes those conversations in person tend to be more effective.
Yep, I couldn't agree more, I couldn't agree more. Do you guys have any, any updates that you guys are working on that you might have for us? And then we can kind of go into what we're gonna be working on and some projects that we got going.
County Manager.
Put him on his pod. Thank you. I think one of the projects that we're working with, US, the broadband project. I believe they, we're in the process of submitting an application. We sent a letter of support from the Board of County Commissioners towards that effort. I believe the deadline to submit that application for funding has been delayed. So, but again, we're here to continue to support that effort and looking forward to see if we can actually start putting some, moving some dirt in relation to that particular project. But at least from my humble point of view, I really appreciate the partnership with the tribe. I think you have been spearheading this whole effort. You started within your own community and your willingness to expand those services and the county is just remarkable, so thank you so much.
Yes, definitely. We look forward to that partnership. We look forward to broadband and providing internet with many people as we, you know, access to that internet. You know, we still have folks out here who don't, don't get the best internet service. So, you know, that was our big goal, is get it broadband here in Nisqually and be able to stream it to everybody else who might need it throughout the county here.
County Manager, I'm sure staffs are kind of mindful that the county's financial commitment at this point relates to some of our federal money that has timelines on it and whatnot. And we want to make sure we, you know, use that and meet the timelines. Not that we wouldn't necessarily be able to support on an ongoing basis, but that's where we really made a big initial commitment.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Maybe to further explain that is the board has set aside so many from the American Rescue Plan, those are the ARPA funds. And the board released a $500,000 partnership with the Nisqually Tribe to conduct the county-wide survey. And also there's some funds remaining that we will have set aside, but has a time constraint associated with those funds. They would need to spend or have been obligated by December 2024. So I believe having a response to the grant application that you're in the process of submitting, that will be, I believe, pivotal is from the point of view of expenditures of this particular funding. So thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Munster, because that's a constraint the county has related to, they set aside from the ARPA funds.
Thank you, no, that's good to know.
Chair, would you like to provide some updates?
Yeah, I definitely can. We got some exciting projects we're working on here. And the Hawks Prairie project, we continue to move forward and get all the pieces in place to meet with the county again and Lacey and other folks to discuss this property. The tribe is definitely getting closer and closer by the day. We have a good team working on it. And, you know, we hope to meet with you guys here in the next few months and really provide you a layout of the whole timeline and project. And the opportunity this is gonna bring for the county, for the tribe, for the city, for everybody who lives on this side of the Nisqually River. It will create a great amount of jobs. It will create opportunity for people who probably never thought they'd have this opportunity. I look at this as a chance to grow our county here, grow the Nisqually Tribe, really. And, you know, I hope one day, you know, Lacey's the capital of the state here, you know, maybe. Or Nisqually, I'm good with Nisqually, you know, too. But, but it is, it's, you know, thinking big and having these partnerships and relationships, though, also.
It's a good thing the City of Olympia is not listening to this conversation.
They probably will, that's okay. You know what? Sometimes you gotta, you gotta throw it out there and, you know, test everybody. Because, you know, I feel like we are in kind of trying times right now, you know? And there's a lot of uncertainty right now, and I think we all see that throughout the world. And, you know, this is the first time I can honestly say I feel good about our relationships with the county, the city, and all of our local municipalities. You know, and that's something we really focus on. We continue to work on that every day and educate our own tribal members as well about the importance of working together, you know? And I think that is huge for us. I don't know if Treasurer, I see our fifth councilwoman has joined us also, Shay Squally. I don't know if Shay would like to introduce herself? If she's in there? If not, Dave, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, oh. Go ahead, Shay.
Hi, I'm Shay Squally, fifth council member. I'm happy to be here. I'm still doing my morning errands, so I'm just kind of listening in right now.
All right, thank you, Shay.
I do have a question related to the Hawks Prairie project, if I may, Chair.
Yeah?
Thank you. Without, I wasn't going to put you on the spot, but thank you for opening the.
Well, I kind of figured, you know, this is what we were gonna discuss a little bit.
Thank you for opening the window. So you have quite a significant land holdings in the Hawks Prairie area. If this particular project is the one on the property facing I-5, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I believe the, one of the key elements, the Department of Transportation did when they upgraded the interchange, is provided that loan on ramp that actually serves as a, as a access road to those holdings, correct?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just verifying, thank you.
All right, Matt's the easiest question I've got on this project.
Well, you know, I have more questions about the project specifics.
Yeah.
I've heard so many rumors about what is going on there. It's been, I don't want to have that conversation in public.
We can, we can have that conversation on the next meeting, but I'll let Treasurer Iell, if he wants to jump in there.
Yeah, we have been working on that property, you know, for the last year or so, trying to come up with a development plan. Been working with some outside consultants, trying to help us get that together. We are very close to wanting to come to you with, you know, this is our plan for the project. First thing we need to do, though, is I think we need to let our staff that's working on the project meet with your staff for, just to coordinate and move this forward through the, with the essential design and engineering studies. Once our staff, once our staffs are able to meet, I think then we could come to you with an actual, official update and plan that the tribe has for this property.
Yeah, and I think really today, you know, letting the county know that we're gonna be having our staff reach out to you guys and start to build that relationship and figure out what we gotta do, you know, to start this process. Actually, I saw our two other council members on here also, I apologize. We have our newest council member, Guido Levy, he's our sixth council member. And Leanna Scott is our seventh councilwoman, and she's on also.
Welcome, nice to meet you guys.
Guido, you wanna introduce yourself? Guido's fresh on the council here, so I want, this is his first, first go around here.
There you go.
Yeah, hi, everyone, I'm Guido Levy Jr., and I'm the sixth councilperson, and I'm excited to be here.
All right. Thank you, Guido.
Thank you.
All right, Leanna, now you gotta do it too, so.
Hello, good morning. Leanna Scott, seventh council for Nisqually Indian Tribe. Glad we're having this conversation this morning, so looking forward to it.
This is a really big.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, just a really basic question that I should know, but probably, but the, the project site that you, that we're discussing there and that Romero identified, is that, where does that lie? Or relative to the City of Lacey border versus unincorporated Thurston County?
This is, that's within the City of Lacey.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ty, we gotta fix that unincorporated Thurston County thing. I live in unincorporated Thurston County, it gets a little sketchy there.
But I believe the coordination with the staff in the county is related to the, some of the concurrency issues that we need to study along Marvin Road.
Yes.
And that's probably how the coordination with the county and the city will play a role.
I see. Bob, do you have anything that you want to add to this discussion? Any updates, maybe? Enterprise.
I joined from my phone today, so it took me a little bit to figure out how to work that. But, yeah, I don't really have any, anything to add. I, you know, I also live on that side of the, on that side of the freeway over there in unincorporated Thurston County. You know, I would just say that as a resident over there, like so many are, there are certain amenities that we miss on that side of the freeway and, you know, don't really care to journey across the freeway too terribly often. So we, I think this is, this property is gonna be a good opportunity to really provide the people that live in that area, you know, better accommodations for just basic needs and whatnot. So I think this is gonna be a great project. You know, I've had the opportunity to attend a lot of different meetings with the Thurston County Economic Development Council and PC and several of those. And, you know, we always, the conversation seems to always go to the needs of the people that live in northeast Thurston County there. So I think the tribe is in a great position to help, help the people that live in that area. And I'm really excited about the opportunity part of it. That's all I got, that's all I have, Willie.
Thank you, Bob.
It's good to see a lot of smiles today, you know? It's good to see everybody smiling out there, so. Chairwoman, are there any more questions? I mean, you know, this is, this is a chance to ask some questions, please. You know, we'll answer them the best we can, you know? I think the next meeting that we have here will be a little bit more of a discussion on Hawks Prairie, I think.
Well, that's exciting. I can't, I can't wait to see the proposal that you bring forth. Looking for discussion? Questions? Commissioner Munster, County Manager?
County Manager has his hand.
Okay.
I also would like to highlight the partnership and support from the Nisqually Tribe related to the I-5 bridge. And there's a longstanding issue, as you know. And your partnership has been essential for the legislature to set aside $75 million. It's not enough, but certainly is one to step forward to address this, this piece of infrastructure. Then I believe from my point of view and my career, that's the first time the need to, to address mobility on a freeway has met with environmental needs that we need to address. And I think this is an incredible opportunity to make the case, not just at the state level, but also at the federal level, as to how all the jurisdictions have a common goal to address this very important piece of infrastructure. So I really appreciate the support on, from the Nisqually Tribe, and I will appreciate the continued support, because it's a long journey as to how we need to be, we need to get there at some point, because the time and the clock is ticking. And the Nisqually River is not, is not gonna give us a pass on this. So time is obvious. So I appreciate that partnership and the support as well.
So I know, I know there's some, some different rules about you guys being like together, but how would I get you guys all on the river? How would I get our county commissioners on the river? You know, because really.
Yeah, we can do it. We have a, we have a little bit of a challenge when, you know, I think individual tours with individual commissioners will be much better.
Okay, okay.
Than having all three at the same time, because.
Well, no, that's, that's good to know, because, you know, I always forget, like, I see you guys some places and I always forget, you know, there's different rules, so with the county. But I do want to get you guys on the river, though, and, I mean, Thurston County, this is a huge project for the South Sound. We know that if we do not put the infrastructure or we build this, you know, bridge, however we decide, if we lift it or if we redo the whole thing, I mean, whatever it is, we know that if we lose the Nisqually River Bridge, that the South Sound is in trouble. And we know that I-5 north-south will be in trouble, you know? And folks, I don't think they understand the magnitude of what would happen if that bridge did get wiped out. Sorry, Ty, I know you had your hand up there.
No, I just, I was just, I sometimes do that so I don't forget. I wanted to make a point on that, just that, I'm glad County Manager brought it up, but it's like, I love, I love how this, this issue we've worked on in both directions, meaning it was one of the top legislative priorities of the county because of the information that, you know, I saw David Trout's presentation that you guys put together, that, that worked on our board to say, this has gotta be top priority. And then we go back and we make it a top priority, and then you guys help us in the legislature, and it's just working really well. $75 million, is that, is that anywhere near the finish line? Absolutely not.
No, no.
That is not.
It's a start, though. It's a start, yeah.
I think it's really major, because as a policymaker, you don't invest $75 million in something that you don't think you're gonna take to the finish line, even if the finish line is, you know, pretty far down the road. Because otherwise, you have to turn to your voters and say, I just wasted $75 million of your dollars and abandoned this project. So to me, it was a major commitment by our state to work in, you know, federal delegation and local partners to work through this problem and commit, show, you know, a real commitment to finding the long-term solution. So I was pretty excited about it.
As a point of clarification, the $75 million allocated by the legislature was to the system in which the bridge was a key component, because out of the $75 million, $19 million is going to address the detour route that goes through Yum by finalizing the construction of two runabouts. So that's the, that's the, I believe that's the, there are the two elements related to the $75 million. But again, I mean, 50-plus million really was put us in the position to begin the design of the bridge itself, which is a huge, huge step forward, as Commissioner Munster stated, be a huge commitment as well.
Yeah, no, I couldn't agree more. I think this is a huge, you know, partnership between the tribe and everybody who's a part of this, you know? And I think it is a good way for us to go back to, you know, if we do need to go back and ask for federal support together, you know, with the county, with the city, with all of our local municipalities and jurisdictions that this affects. I think that does, I think that hearing the significance of our treaty rights, but also the impact that it's gonna have on the salmon populations is huge, you know? And I think adding that, I think you're right, Ty, I think adding David Trout, putting together that presentation, just talking about the impact for the Nisqually Tribe, I think that helps with the story of why this is so important, you know? And having the governor and Congresswoman Strickland and Senator Cantwell, you know, I think when you see it driving over, it's one thing, but when you see it on the water, it gives you kind of a whole new outlook of what this, what could happen here and how close we are to losing this, this bridge and, and access between north and south here. So that is an exciting project, though.
You guys probably know all about this from Bob, but yesterday, the board took a major transformative step of placing on the ballot in November, expansion of the county commission to five.
Oh, yes, I did hear that, okay.
And we hoping, you know, we'd be willing to answer any questions you have about that, because we're hoping to get support. We have all three port commissioners, all three county commissioners, the last three or four, you know, former Port and County Commissioners, all, all supporting this from all different directions. You know, I always, I tell folks, when you, when you find like eight or nine politicians willing to support the reduction of the power of their vote, you don't see that very often. And I think it sends a pretty powerful message to the community that we think this is better government, more representative government, and more stable, consistent government. So that'll allow you to take two commissioners on the river at any.
Hey, no, that's great. So where, what would be their areas, I guess, of the, because don't you guys have different districts? Or, yeah, right?
Yeah, well, so right now, like, the districts that we have right now would not be defensible under law in a redistricting process, because they go vertically north to south, and they cut across different types of areas of the county, rural, urban, east-west. And now we have to go to five. And there's some guidelines in state law that kind of say you need to try to make them compact, you need to make them representative of mutual, areas of mutual interest. And, so I think you're gonna see kind of a more northern-oriented districts and southern-oriented districts to try to capture the different communities that we have across the county, but it'll be ultimately up to our chair and the Chair of the Port Commission, who are both on this meeting.
Thank you, me and Bob.
All right, well, that's exciting, though. I mean, yeah, I'd love to see, see us add two more county commissioners. And, you know, I think we need to get as many good people on our boards and county and commissions as possible. We got a lot of work to do.
Absolutely.
You said it's on the ballot now, is that just to get approval? When will the actual positions be, be able to be filled?
So if the voters approve it in November, the districts will then be submitted to auditor. Folks can file next year, and then November of 2023, you'd be electing a one-year position and a three-year position to add, and then everybody would be lined up.
Nice.
So they wouldn't actually take effect until January 2024, is when you'd actually have five commissioners sitting on the dais doing county business.
That's not, that's not that long, long, it's not too far.
No. No, it's pretty good. We really worked, we thought it through in advance so we could, you know, meet the timelines that are needed to get this as quickly as possible. If, you know, hopefully the voters will agree, that's a good step.
All right.
I think it'd be more beneficial for, for the whole county if everybody voted for it.
Our Vice Chairwoman's sitting in my office, she's, she's telling me it's been more beneficial for the whole county if we can get more people. The growth of Thurston County, so it'll be exciting to see that, I think. Maybe we'll get, hey, you never know, maybe we'll get an Nisqually tribal member to run for county commissioner sometime. I see some on here that would, that would really be good, actually, so. She's saying that about you, Dave, Maui was, so. But anything else?
Hey, Willie, I was just gonna add too, that I, you know, I think that does, does give us an opportunity to add more, you know, diversity to the county commission and the Port of Olympia. I think right now, we've got a pretty darn good diverse group on, you know, for both county commission and port commission. And this will just allow us to continue that trend to be a really diverse group.
No, I'm looking forward to that, I can't, I'm excited, I think that'll be good.
Any other updates from the county? How about through our, about our Board of Health?
Oh, that's interesting. So, yeah, I serve as a Chair of the Board of Health, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, there is a law that required an expansion of the Board of Health to, it didn't say exactly how many people, but it set some parameters, and we came up with eight people. So it used to be just the three county commissioners were your three Board of Health members. Now we've got the three county commissioners, a rotating city seat, which will be served by Lacey for two years, starting with Lacey, because they're the biggest. And Robin Vasquez has been appointed, a tribal representative that comes from the state, I forget the name of the organization, the health, the state-level health group that works with tribes.
Is it the, yeah, there's, there's a bunch of different tribal.
What was it, A?
It might be the American Indian Health.
Yeah, so we're sort of waiting for that appointment. We're not sure how they're going about that. That's their job to seat that person. And then three citizen buckets, and one bucket's for like a healthcare provider, one's for like a healthcare consumer that's faced some kind of inequity or had kind of a lived experience with a public health program. And then the third is kind of nonprofit, business, community, a little more flexible. We've tentatively selected two of those, and we've done additional outreach for the consumer, because we didn't really have anyone that, any applicant that really fit the parameters of the statute. So we're giving ourselves two more weeks to try to find that last person, but I think by the end of this month, we're gonna be. But I think by the end of this month, we're going to be seating the board and then hopefully for our August Board of Health meeting, you'll have an expanded eight-member Board of Health, which is pretty exciting.
Yeah, that's great news.
Talking about diversity, like Bob was saying, I mean, it's really going to bring, I mean, I used to joke before the pandemic, I was supportive of this. And, you know, we have a form, at that time, we had a former sheriff, a former Olympia police officer, and a former, you know, criminal defense attorney making health policy for the county. And it just seemed ridiculous to me that we didn't have the expertise we needed on the Board of Health, so I'm really excited to see this.
All right. That's exciting news.
I touched base on the diversity council.
Is there anything else, Chairwoman?
Diversity council.
Yeah, we want to do that, Mary.
Madam Chair?
One more update we got for you.
One more update?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we briefly touched base on the last meeting. They've also, the Board of County Commissioners are in the process of expanding culture, diversity, no, culture. The diversity council here on, here in the county, and we receive some applications, we're still receiving applications. So if there is any interest for any of you or any of your members who would like to participate on the council, please, please send us an application.
Where do we get the applications?
But if I give you a name.
Okay.
How about if I can get an email from, what will be the right email? And I lost Nicole Miller. She's a racial equity program manager. She's managing all those applications to reach out to you.
Okay.
Chair, will you be the one who, the right person to send that?
Yeah, yeah, you can. Oh, yeah. Which chair?
You, you, sorry.
Yes, yes, please. Send it, and we may have some good candidates that might want to apply there.
I was going to suggest, you know, it might be good to have somebody in charge of these opportunities that you're just mentioning, you know, because there's a few different opportunities with the Board of Health and this diversity council, and there's probably others. If there's some way that we could get one of our staff to be involved in this too, so they could keep us updated, I think that'd be great.
Will you mind sending me the name of and the information of the staff person?
Justine will get that. It will be Justine Capra, so she'll send you the info.
Yeah, and now we'll make the right connections here from the county, so that's great.
Perfect.
I don't remember. We just went through the applicants like at a high level, and I don't remember a tribal.
I don't remember.
So we would love to have.
There were two.
Oh, there were. Okay. I just didn't, we haven't gone through the actual specific applications yet. We just got a summary. Okay, well, good. But still, we'd love to have more applications and we want to make that as robust as we can.
All right.
Okay. Anything, any other updates, either from the tribe or from the county? A lot of exciting things happening on both hands. And so 10:33, do you want to do the gift of time?
Yeah, no, we're good, I think. And then we'll get some dates here, probably, you know, maybe right after Labor Day. Hopefully, we'll be able to come back and have another joint meeting and go over some plans for, show you guys.
Well, why don't we plan for a lunch?
Well, that's even better. We'll host you guys out here if that works.
I'm looking at the calendar. I'm like, I don't know the rules.
I don't know. Yeah, it's like.
An in-person meeting next time will be outstanding. But in the meantime, if I may, I'd like to extend an invitation to all the tribal members to the Thurston County Fair, first of all, and also extend an invitation to the pie cake breakfast. The Board of County Commissioners will be serving pie cakes, and I believe it's next Saturday at the Thurston County Fairgrounds. And we would love to have you all come in and break, no, break a pancake.
I'll be there. I'll be there, man. Tell me pancakes. I'm in.
So it's going to be early in the morning, and you will have the opportunity to connect with the commissioners as well with the leadership in the county. And again, we would love to have you, and I'm sure the commissioners would love to serve you some pancakes, I don't know.
Hey, you guys, you guys get us with the pancakes. We'll serve you guys fish next time you guys come out.
There you go.
Deal. Done.
I said, done deal right there.
Well, thank you. It was, Guido, welcome to the council. Congratulations. And it was lovely to see everyone. Thank you, Chair. It is 10:35, and with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Thank you, everybody.